So I'll make it seven o'clock now, is it, is it okay to start?
Yes, I can confirm that the live stream has started.
Okay, thank you. Welcome everybody to the Governance Audit and Standards Committee on the 21st of September. I hope everybody's well, and I'm going to hand over to Jeremy for items one and two on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Chair. So just to confirm that in attendance this evening, we have, we have councillor Eddie Copley, councillor Ray Darby, councillor Margaret Handley, councillor Jill Owen, councillor Joshua Parker, councillor Milan Rajulovic, councillor Paul Simpson, councillor David Watts and councillor Elizabeth Williamson as chair. We have apologies tonight from councillors Bagshaw and councillor Tyler and we have also not in attendance is councillor Hannah, substituting this evening is councillor Land, councillor Hallam and councillor Grindel, and we're waiting for councillor Carlet to join us shortly, we hope. We haven't been informed of any declarations of interest unless anybody wants to tell us now. No, so no declarations of interest, Chair, so back to you for the minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So item three then, the minutes, I propose that there are true and correct record.
Chair, I've invited Mark into the meeting now, he's available when you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second your proposal, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Shall I take the vote then? Councillor Eddie Copley.
Paul.
Councillor Darby. Councillor Darby.
Four, sorry.
Councillor Handley.
Four.
Councillor Owen.
Four.
Councillor Parker.
Four.
Councillor Rajulovic.
Four.
Councillor Simpson.
Four.
Councillor Watts.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Four.
Councillor Land.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
And councillor Hallam.
Abstain.
And councillor Grindel.
Abstain.
And those minutes are carried, Chair.
Thank you very much. So moving on then to item four, which is the External Audit Update, and that's on pages five and 28, it's a noting report, so I'm going to ask Mark Surridge if he'd like to introduce it for us.
Thank you very much. Just in case, for basic introduction, just to reiterate, my name is Mark Surridge, I'm the engagement lead responsible for your external audit. This evening, you've got a progress report in terms of where we are with the external audit for this financial year. There's only a couple of points that I really wanted to draw out for your attention. First of all, I'm sure you're aware, the disruption that COVID-19 has caused is, extends all the way through into the financial reporting and value for money conclusion. The work is taking longer than it normally would do, that's a feature of remote working. It's nothing specific to Broxton Council, it's a feature that we're seeing all over the country. What's most important, and the first point I really do want committee members to take away is that we have absolutely had the full cooperation and assistance of management throughout this process. Good timely turnaround on our queries that we've answered, good sets of working papers, and that's been really helpful to us. What I also wanted to do is just bring out a couple of things in the financial statements. Our work is substantially complete and there are a couple of matters that are overhanging that essentially would, normally by this time, we would have issued our opinion, but there's a few things that are causing us some challenges. The first of which is around the pension fund.
I don't know what to say.
So as members are aware, the financial statements for the council will include pension, its share of the Nottinghamshire Pension Fund assets and liabilities. The information is provided to the council by the County Pension Fund. And we also take assurance from the work that the County Pension Fund auditor has carried out. At this point in time, they have not started their work and therefore, because we are dependent on receiving those assurances, we are unable to conclude on that piece of work. The other area that I wanted to bring members' attentions to was, one of the other significant financial statement risks relates to the valuation of land and buildings. It is a large, complex area, made somewhat a little bit more difficult this year because of COVID-19. Now, members may or may not be aware that at this outset of COVID-19, the Institute of Chartered Surveyors issued a bulletin and advised its members to consider whether at the 31st of March 2020, there were sufficient conditions caused by the economic uncertainty of COVID-19 that meant the value were needed to include a statement saying that there was what's called material property uncertainty in its calculations. That does not mean that there are, that no reliance can be taken on the figures in the financial statements, it does not mean there's any cause for concern for members. What it does mean is it's, the financial statements need to include a disclosure that just reflects that because of the uncertainty that was caused at the time, we need to just be cognizant of that. Very importantly, the valuation methodologies are not reflective of the value and use of assets. So there's no deterioration in the use of assets, this is a financial reporting, an audit matter. So the first piece of assurance I want to give to you is that whilst you will see some of that commentary when you, through the financial statements, it is not to be overtly alarmed by. The second, the audit consequence of that, again, this is something that I just wanted to bring to your attention. The audit consequence of that is that sector-wide, and this is not specific to just Broxton Council, this is every local authority and any entity that carries assets at a valuation. We will be issuing an additional paragraph in our opinion. It's called an emphasis of matters paragraph. It's not a modification to the opinion. The opinion would still be the accounts are true and fair. All it does is correctly reference that there was this uncertainty as disclosed in the financial statements. So again, it's something that's slightly unusual, and it's right that we draw your attention to it, but it's also right that we allay any kind of fundamental concerns that this may trigger further action, it does not. The other area I just wanted to mention on the financial statements, obviously you'll see that we've, we've put a few aspects in terms of our progress and the kind of findings. What is pleasing to note is that there's very few findings that are coming out of the audit, the financial statements are broadly unchanged. As I said, we're just holding back a little bit with the pension fund because we just need to let that go through. Potential for changes that may come through there, but we will deal with those in a sensible and pragmatic way. I think it's also right that I pause and look at the value for money conclusion. So obviously, members are aware, we issue an opinion on the financial statements, we also look at the underlying arrangements in place in terms of securing value for money. Now, obviously, future looking COVID-19 is going to cause a number of financial resilience issues. There are substantial changes for all local authorities. The conclusion that we issue is very specific to the year end in the 31st of March 2020, and you'll see in our report, we're proposing an unqualified opinion, that's a good thing. It concludes that the council does have appropriate arrangements in place. But obviously, you'll also see that we're flagging up, yes, we recognise the council is making steps in delivering its business plans and drawing up savings, but obviously, COVID-19 has just meant almost losing a year's worth of plans, and that's something that will need to be addressed through the remainder of your current financial year and beyond. I was going to pause on those, there's another aspect in the report that talks about audit fees, which I'm happy to take questions on. The point that I would like to leave members most around audit fees is that those are, we've got a number of discussions going on with management to confirm where these are. There's broadly two areas in this. There's a recognition sector-wide and audit firm-wide that the audit fees are needed to change to catch up with the regulatory standards in some areas. What you'll notice though is really, we've given a broad range of fees at this point, those are not, and under no circumstances will Broxton be at the top end of those. It was merely, we felt it was right and appropriate to as early as possible flag that there could be additional fees, additional audit fees arising. It doesn't mean that there will be, but we just wanted to be really transparent and open and honest upfront that these things may materialise. So I'll pause at that point and just take any questions at all.
Chair, can I say a few words?
You can, Zolf, yeah.
Can I just make a few comments? Firstly, comment on what an excellent relationship we've built with Mazards, this is their second year with us. Secondly, I'm delighted that we will be having an unqualified and clean opinion, both the accounts and the VFM. We recognise the financial challenge in the medium term and we're tackling those through the business strategy. And overall, the modification that Mark's talking about is the same across every single Nottingham district. This is not unusual or different to any other council in Nottinghamshire. These issues around assets and around the pensions audit are common to all of us, so it's not an issue I would alert as high risk to members, it's something that's a function of, in reality, COVID. So it's a pleasing outcome and I'm pleased with the work we're doing collectively together on the audit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So I'm going to open it up for questions now then, and councillor Watts has requested to speak. So over to you, councillor Watts.
Thank you very much, and thank you to Mazards for the work that they've done, which is greatly appreciated. It is just a question on that point of pensions. Do we know when the information is likely to be available from the county's auditors so that we have some idea on timetables going forward? Thank you.
If I may, we expect that information early October. It's, to some extent, it's out of our hands, but as soon as it comes through, hopefully it will be in October, which would still allow us to meet the revised deadline of issuing opinions by the 30th of November.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Rajulovic.
Thank you, Chair. I want to raise a number of items, if I can, in relation to the COVID-19 report. Obviously, the year end has presented significant challenges particularly to our auditors, and we do recognise the fact that you've, the additional work that you've been carried out, we thank you for your due diligence and we thank you for your enterprise as well. And if you could pass my thanks on behalf of all members, to your staff for the excellent working relationship that we've built up with you. But I want to talk to, if I can, particularly regarding significant findings on page 11 and over to page to page 13, because whilst that projection at the year end of March, 31st of March, was was correct, we've seen that there have been some severe warnings about potential second lockdown and further restrictions. That will have a profound impact on not just this council, but councils across the whole of the country for financial projections going forward. One of the key issues will be, of course, is things like collection of business rates and council tax and the risk associated with falling revenues from those. And if you look at business rates, for instance, this year we were scheduled to collect £27 million, it's likely that we'll be collecting somewhere in the region of £9 million. That will have a profound impact on not just this council, but Nottinghamshire County Council, the police and fire authorities as well. And that will need to be, to be recognised, Mark. So I'll talk to Zolf and to Ruth about, about some additional work assessing the risk associated with the potential for second lockdown on the council's medium and short-term and long-term financial strategies. And if I can, Chairman, also refer on to page 13. We look at the significant funding gaps and the commercial exposure that we are we are exposed to. It's relatively small compared to some authorities and compared to some major debts that I've seen from some of the cities across the country, some of the county councils, particularly where the social care element, the cost has risen horrendously and the income has reduced quite dramatically. However, it would be remiss of us not to to draw attention to the business rate retention and the 75% retention and the need to press government for more parties to bring in this scheme at the earliest opportunity to ensure there is some sort of financial stability and planning, particularly in the medium to long term. Chair, I'm poised there, but there are other questions I want to raise as well and make members aware of. The impact of a, of a second lockdown on this council and the police, the fire, and particularly the Nottinghamshire County Council will be profound, and the need therefore for government financial intervention will be absolutely essential in ensuring the delivery of services to local people. Mark, I like your comments on this stage, and would you be prepared to discuss with members and senior officers at this authority to look at the financial projections associated with the risk, assuming that we go into a second lockdown?
Just to come in to help, the leader is absolutely spot on with his comments. We have not factored in anything to our model around a second lockdown, we've factored in in my recent reports to financial resources, the impact of, impact on planning, commercial rents, leisure, car parking, or the first lockdown. I think the leader is absolutely spot on in that we're looking at a very dangerous situation if it is a lengthy second lockdown with the same conditions.
I think if I may, I'm going to respond to this in two slightly, two slight perspectives. The first is, what I want to do is just delineate between the 2019-20 audit and then the 2020-21 audit, because I don't want to make, I want to make sure that members are able to see where the conclusion lands in one year before it starts in the next. In terms of 2019-20, the current arrangements for our conclusion are very bilinear and they end as at the 31st of March 2020, so broadly, a week and a half into where COVID-19 is. We assessed at that point, in those first few weeks, that we see no reason not to issue the unqualified opinion in terms of the council's arrangements. 2020-21 is much bigger and contains far more uncertainties and it falls within our our audit year. We will be looking at financial resilience and the arrangements the council is putting in place, and that will be an ongoing basis because, as you rightly point out, perhaps there could be lockdown too, there could be changes that materialise. So yes, we will be talking to all officers about, as things develop, and we want to be close by the councils, but maintaining our independence and objectivity so that we can understand where things are at, but also should we need to report or make recommendations or bring experience in from elsewhere, what we're seeing, how other local authorities are acting, then that's what we will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions for Mr Surridge? No? Okay. Well, thanks again, Mark, for attending tonight and thank you for all the, all the hard work that you've done, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Goodbye.
Bye, take care. So item five on the agenda then is going concern status, and that's on pages 29 to 34. I believe Zolf is going to present this. Again, it's a noting report, so we don't need to vote on it.
Thank you, Chair. This links very closely to the previous discussion. Essentially, we are required to describe to members that the council, we continue for the possible future terms of its services, it's known as going concern. So what the report does, it takes members through how we've come to that assessment, and in the appendix, we go through our current financial position up until March 2020. We talk about our balance, balance sheet, our projected position, our governance arrangements, as well as our regulatory environment and the impact of COVID-19. And we've come to the conclusion that we are a going concern. This essentially is an important report which was requested by the auditors, as it were, to provide evidence that we've got a grip on our finances and we will in future be providing services to our community. So I'll leave it there and happy to take questions from members. It's a requirement of our code of practice to produce this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anybody got any questions or comments? There's none on the chat.
If I can.
Well, councillor Rajulovic, hello.
Yes, yes, Chair, thank you very much, and referring to, again, to page 32. Where we talk about HCLG, talking about financial support and business rates deficits to be paid over three years instead of useful one, is obviously useful. But I'd just like to point out to members, we talk about where losses of 5% of the council's planned income from sales fees and charges. That, of course, only applies to directly employed parts of council services. It doesn't actually apply to leisure. And although that fare low scheme is 80% reclaimable, the loss in income from fees and charges cannot be reclaimed under the current rules and regulations. We are lobbying extensively with the Secretary of State and indeed with the minister through the district council's network, through the leaders' network and through local authorities, through the local government association to have included in that so-called TEKEL companies or companies that operate outside the council's direct service line. But we're also lobbying, Chairman, just to let you know, that we are lobbying for the administration costs and benefit charges to be repaid, although that's partly, the system is extremely complicated, being split between the DWP and indeed government grant. But there is a big shortfall on the cost of administration on things like universal credit, and this will only get worse as casework increases quite dramatically, as we're seeing unemployment start to rise and now the furlough scheme finishing. We expect a big, big rise in, in unemployment and, and costs associated with administration. So that, that work goes on behind the scenes, but it would be useful if all members were aware of this. And any lobbying or pressure they can bring to bear would be most welcome and most supportive. I've written to both MPs and making sure that they've contacted the Treasury and the Secretary of State. But also, Madam Mayor, a fair complication is insurance premiums as well. That's another issue that I've taken up with the MPs and the Treasury on this council's behalf to ensure that the extra funding that we've had, or the loss of income and additional expenses that have occurred particularly during the COVID pandemic, that the government accepts the mitigation on that and helps the council with its finances. But that's purely for information, Chairman, just to let you know that work is going on extensively behind the scenes. We work in close cooperation with the Treasury, with local government, civil service, ministers, and right across the whole of the country, leaders and other authorities are working together to address some of these real concerns.
Thank you, councillor Rajulovic. Has anybody else got any more questions? No? Okay, thank you, Zolf. So moving on to item six is the Internal Audit Progress Report, and that's on pages 35 and 54. Again, it's a noting report, so over to Martin Payne.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening and all. So yeah, the Internal Audit Progress Report. This is my regular progress report to inform you of the recent work that internal audit has completed. Firstly, the first appendix, appendix one, provides a summary of progress with the audit plan and details of the 10 audit reports that we've issued since July. And a summary of these, of the findings for each of these audits is provided from page 38. Couple of summaries, really, this, pleased to report substantial assurance was gained from the governance audits that we undertook in respect to the emergency grant schemes and the council tax hardship scheme, which again is positive news for members. You'll also see the full details of the significant risk actions that we've agreed relating to the audits of the local authority trading company and also housing repairs, and these are provided in the box comments. Members will have noted the limited assurance opinion in respect of housing repairs. And there are some control weaknesses in terms of job costing and stock control which have been acknowledged. And the lack of progress there makes it difficult to estimate the scale of financial risk involved, hence the potential significance of the finding. But we're pleased as well, we can say that the completion of the actions that we've agreed and also the actions from the earlier commercial review of the service will, will mitigate these risks. Couple of other points for members. You will have noted again, the, the level of performance in terms of the audits that we've completed at this stage is, is lower than we would have anticipated. Again, this is majorly due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the urgency of diverting internal audit resources towards supporting other areas. I've already advised you of my intention to revise the audit plan to reconsider the council's key strategic risks post-lockdown, as it were. And this is included in the committee work programme for November. Final part, the second part of the report from page 46 is a summary of audit follow-up. And reporting to members in this way provides robust scrutiny of follow-up and encourages managers to meet their agreed commitments. You'll see there currently 13 outstanding actions from reports that we issued up to January this year. Management updates where agreed actions have not been completed are provided for your scrutiny. Just as a comment, there's only been limited movement since our last meeting, possibly linked to the sort of holiday season in July and August. But I'm pleased to say that, you know, GMT are keen to encourage managers to complete these actions and therefore, as members, I would expect to see some progress by the time we next meet. Happy to take any, any comments or questions.
Thanks, Martin. Would anybody like to ask, ask any questions, got any comments? Councillor Rajulovic.
Yes, Chair. On page 41, we talk about the council tax hardship scheme. And in doing so, can I thank Martin Payne and his staff for all the work that the establishment of the framework for the implementation. That was done with, with efficiency, it was done with speed, but it was done with due diligence as well. And I'd like to, Martin, to thank all the staff involved, particularly those people that, that have gone the extra mile, so to speak. But also to flag up, Chairman, whilst those appropriate controls are in place, the discretionary support scheme talks about only a limited number of applications. At this stage, Madam Mayor, I understand that under the council tax hardships scheme itself, over 900 people have been awarded, awarded up to £300. What we do expect though to see is, is as fare low ends and potentially a second lockdown, again, pressure put on the discretionary support scheme, although there is some funding left. It's likely that that will be very much called into, into need once we see what the impact of ending a fare low scheme has. But, Chairman, at this stage, it's just to flag these up, and look, we need, we're And look, we will revisit it, of course, all the all the arrangements for the framework and the administration of the grant to ensure that due processes complied with correctly. But I would like to just say a big thank you to Martin and his staff. That's more than anything.
Yes, thank you, Martin. Councillor Watts, you're wrong.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations that councillor Doolivick seems to have once again promoted you to mayor.
Flies this evening already.
Yes. I wondered if he's put some subliminal ideas in there for some time in the future. It is a question on housing repairs, or in fact, two questions on housing repairs and obviously the limited assurance there. Martin, thank you. You spoke about the the cost controls, but one of the issues that you flagged up in the audit was ensuring that work was done within a reasonable timescale and to the appropriate standard. Are there steps that could be taken to or are being taken to address that? And secondly, are you able to tell us how long the current system is likely to have been in place, not working at an appropriate level?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, through you, Chair. In terms of sort of timescales and monitoring, we're pleased pleased to report that the head of housing has a really good performance management framework in place, shows regular team meetings with the heads of different service areas and they use the Pentana system to review performance measures. So we're actually quite comfortable in terms of responding to timescales that that's being monitored. In terms of quality of work, I think it's acknowledged there is further work that they need to do in terms of meeting inspection targets, post-inspection and monitored inspection I've referred to in the report. There is always the point that there is that backstop that as tenants, if a tenant was not satisfied with the the quality of a repair or repair failed, they'd certainly be quick to bring that to our attention. So I think work's been done there in terms of the inspection arrangements. And we'll monitor that progress as part of our follow-up as well. In terms of the system as the way it's operating, I think it's pretty much a system that's operated in this way for quite a while, but obviously with different upgrades to the to the housing system that's been put in place, there's better reporting that can be done and better links in between the housing financial system. So we're looking really to take advantage of that sort of situation and also to take some sort of administrative pressure off the housing repairs team.
Thank you. Anybody else got any more questions? No? Okay, so moving on to item seven, which is the annual counter fraud report on pages fifty five to seventy. Again, that's another noting report.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So yeah, the annual counter fraud report, this is the report that provides members with a summary of the counter fraud activity that we've, as a council, have undertaken in the past year. The council continues to take a zero tolerance approach to fraud and corruption. We're committed to establishing a strong counter fraud culture and look to take all necessary steps to prevent detecting, punish fraudulent and corrupt acts. Internal audit does have a prominent role in leading and coordinating on counter fraud activity. So the report provides members with some national and local context. The Sit for Annual Fraud Survey identified housing procurement and council tax supporters as the highest fraud risk areas for local councils. And obviously reflects the importance of us considering these in our audit plans. The report goes on to summarise the positive work that's been undertaken relating to National Fraud Initiative, the NFI, the COVID-19 grants and also in the service areas such as revenue, benefits, housing, licensing and insurance. As a new development for this year, the report also includes the fraud risk register that we've created. This is a useful document in planning to target areas where the highest potential risk resides. Members will recognise the five by five risk matrix that we used in the risk assessment, which is similar to the one that we apply for our strategic risk. And probably it's a good time to sort of apologise that I've noticed a couple of sixteen risk scores that are not included in red in there. So please accept my apologies for that oversight. And finally, then, the report provides members with a plan of activity for the next year as we look to develop internal audit's role in coordinating counter fraud activity at Brockstow. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Martin. Would anybody like to ask any questions on that? No comments? Okay, so that's a noting report then. That's duly noted. Item eight is the governance dashboard, major projects on pages seventy one to eighty. And again, that's another noting report.
Okay, I'll pick this one up, Chair.
Thank you.
And like I say, Zolf can certainly support with this. So members have requested a regular governance dashboard report to be provided to this committee on the council's major projects, such as the Beeston Square development and housing delivery plan. Don't need to really say, but the need for strong, effective governance remains vital with a need for transparency and openness in our decision-making and compliance with our own internal rules and regulations. Internal audit will provide some independent challenge and an assurance opinion on the governance of these major projects. But in the meantime, we've developed a governance compliance checklist for each major project. Ask for the respective senior responsible owners and project managers to respond and a summary of their responses is provided below in the appendix for information. Again, this will give us a checklist as an internal audit function to be able to go in there and make sure these these things are operating as we'd expect. Again, happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Just one very quick comment from me, Chair. I think this is an absolutely excellent report and the leader has requested it. We're concentrating on our large, complex projects to get some assurance that we manage the risks well and to learn from projects within the council so we can improve how we operate. I think it's an excellent piece of work and we should see it mature and develop to bring future reports to the committee on how we manage these large, complex pieces of work. Thank you, Martin. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to ask any questions? No? So again, that's a noting report. Moving on to item nine is the review of the strategic risk register, I can't say that very well, review of the strategic risk register on pages eighty one to ninety four. And I'll propose the amendments to the strategic risk register and the actions to mitigate risks set out in appendix two to be approved.
Tim Harlow, I'll second that.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Chair. Now, please present the report for you. It's Paul.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah. So we put this report together, members will be aware, risk management forms a key part of the council's corporate governance framework. And this report that comes to every meeting of this committee, the review of the strategic risk register, is a kind of key component of that framework. Appendix one is a summary of the council's risk management strategy, its risk management processes. And as Martin just alluded to, the five by five matrix that we use to score each of the council's strategic risks in terms of its likelihood and impact. Appendix two sets out proposed changes to the strategic risk management, to the strategic risk register following the meeting of the Strategic Risk Management Group on the fifth of August. That was our first meeting since the coronavirus pandemic happened mid-March because we normally meet every quarter, the main meeting being cancelled. So with quite a lot of proposed changes to the register, largely reflecting the outcome of coronavirus pandemic and what it means for the council's strategic risks. So you've seen the appendix two, a number of proposed changes, some new action points being added, some actions being completed and proposed that they get removed. Also as well, some changes to risk scores as well. Also, just like to point out to some members as well, on page ninety three, what we've just highlighted in the report as well, as a group, we're aware of the proposed devolution and recovery white paper meant to be coming out in the next few weeks. As a group, in terms of the impact of that on the strategic risk register, we'll evaluate that and assess that in due course going forwards. And the last comment I'd just like to make is in terms of, again, back to the COVID-19 and business continuity planning. With terms of the risk management arrangements, business continuity falls within that. And clearly, the plans that we've got, both the corporate business continuity plan and departmental plans were severely tested in a way that we never ever envisaged. But clearly, I think the evidence we've had, the feedback we've received is that the plans were robust, they worked as intended. Many, many services were able to continue operating, staff were able to continue working in many cases, they'd moved to agile working, committee meetings being held on a virtual basis as well, lots of services continued, refuse collection and such like, revs and bends, finance, lots of activities kept going as well. Whilst the business continuity plans work well, of course, there is a need to refine them going forward, see where we can learn from, about continuous improvement really, how can we find them going forward, build on them. And as like the leader was alluding to earlier, if there is indeed a second wave, make sure that the plans are properly robust and we can address that corporately. So happy to just take any comments or questions about the report as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Would anybody like to say anything? Any questions? No? Okay, so if we can go over to Mr Ward, please, for the vote.
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor Cubley?
Four.
Councillor Derby?
Four.
Councillor Handley?
Four.
Councillor Collet? Are you there, councillor Collet? Oh, come back. Councillor Owen?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Doolivick?
Four.
Councillor Simpson?
Four.
Councillor Watts?
Four.
Councillor Williamson?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Grindel?
Four.
Just try councillor Collet again.
Four. Sorry, Jeremy, it got stuck the mute button. Sorry, my apologies.
Thank you very much. That's Carrick, Chair.
Thank you very much. So last item on the agenda then is the work programme, number ten. Committee is asked to consider the work programme and resolve accordingly. I'll propose that.
Seconded. Put you to it, Tim.
Sorry, who seconded it?
Councillor Watts.
Thank you, councillor Watts. Any questions or comments on the work programme?
May I make a quick comment, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda for the, or on the list for the next meeting is the review of the council's arrangements for dealing with standards complaints. I just, I think this is long overdue. I've had a look fairly recently at the procedure that we have for dealing with standards complaints. And as you may know, I have lectured on and taught professional companies about complaint handling. And the systems that we have at the moment or the the procedures that we have at the moment are simply not up to purpose for the modern world. We do need to do some very urgent work on that. Thank you.
Chair, my eyes come back on that.
Please do. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that, councillor Watts. Yes, we certainly recognise that that's the case. We've actually been waiting for our new monitoring officer to join us so that she can be an integral part of that review as well. And she joined us today. So that will be timely.
Lovely, thank you. Could you send me her email address, please, Jeremy?
Yes, certainly will.
Thank you, because we do have some thoughts on it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, has anybody got any more questions? No? So can we move over to Mr Ward then for the vote, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor Cubley? Councillor Cubley? How would you like to vote, councillor Cubley?
Four.
Councillor Derby?
Four.
Councillor Handley?
Four.
Councillor Collet?
Four.
Councillor Owen?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Doolivick?
Four.
Councillor Simpson?
Four.
Councillor Watts?
Four.
Councillor Williamson?
Four.
Councillor Land?
Four.
Councillor Hallam?
Four.
And councillor Grindel?
Four.
That's Carrick, Chair.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the meeting tonight.
Chair, councillor Grindel here, could I say a few words? Do you mind?
Yes, please.
Well, every member here and every member of staff that are on all meetings, I have to say that we cannot praise the staff enough for all their work and all the work that they do, and extra work that they do. But I'm not just talking about the Brockstow office, Foster Avenue here, I'm talking about every member that's employed by the council and we thank them for their work and I hope you'll minute that, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Grindel. I'll certainly second that. They do a brilliant job. So it's nineteen forty five and I'll close the meeting. Thank you very much for coming.